Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call toward this Tuesday study session of the Pierce County Council. It is Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. The time is 12:02 PM. All members are present except for Councilmember Herrera, who is excused. Item number two is review of today's council meeting agenda. Ms. Long, good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is your agenda for this afternoon's council meeting. It is amended. We did review the consent agenda yesterday, but there are a couple of additions. So if you look at subsection D, Grants, there are two additional grants. Two were reviewed yesterday, and there are two added. Mr. Bokey will speak to those shortly. And then you'll see under E, the addition of the motion that we did discuss, but here is the actual language for your review. The other change, well, not on your consent, but as requested, the message from the executive transmitting ordinance, oh, 2024, 540 S, which was vetoed, has been listed there. And the veto message will be included in your council packets as well. Under section seven, Proclamations, Recognizations, Awards, and Presentations, you have two proclamations. The first is proclaiming August 31st, 2024, as overdose awareness day in Pierce County. And that was requested by Councilmember Hitchen. The next is proclaiming September 2024 as National Preparedness Month in Pierce County. And that was requested by Councilmember Crower. There are no resolutions listed under section eight. Under section nine, you have oh, 2024, 543 S two. And this, of course, is the supplemental budget ordinance. This was received to do pass as substituted at Committee of the Whole on August 21st. And you have a total of four amendments to this proposal. Amendment one, I believe, was reviewed yesterday during the study session, but there are three new ones for today. And that is your agenda for this afternoon's meeting.
Thank you. Let's get into amendments for the summer supplemental budget. As indicated, there are four. The first amendment again was briefly stated. It's a technical amendment. Making sure the math works for the amendment, but go ahead, Mr. Bookie. Let's have you brief.
Thank you. So thank you, Chair Mello, Paul Bokey, council staff. So there are no changes to amendment number one, which was spoken to yesterday. It's just changing a couple of provisos to match the numbers that are currently in the ordinance as it stands under oh, 2024, 543 S two. So amendment, amendment number two, which comes from Councilmember Morrell, is it's, you see, there are four pages, but I will summarize. It essentially removes, it takes the amendment one to the Committee of the Whole, which was approved last week and put into the budget, and it reverses most of the items that were in amendment number one to the Committee of the Whole to 543 S. It doesn't change the title. It doesn't change the county council date of receipt of the performance audit or the study on it. It doesn't change the opioid, the $2 million he set aside, the opioid settlement money. In Exhibit A, it doesn't change the, it doesn't change the prevention services numbers where three of the council members have allocated their 2025% prevention services numbers, and it doesn't change the reallocation of MCE. So what does it, what does it do? It restores basically everything in the budget that came up as 543. So.
Any questions on amendment number two? So the, to put a finer point on it, the homeless and housing services plus up, that is, in the underlying proposal to 3.2 million is reversed. The tiny home village, emergency micro shelter investments are reversed. And some of the other provisos around human services funding are removed. The councils, contingent appropriation in section 18 is reversed. There might be some other things, but I wanted to review what I understand to be the effect of the amendment, the high points of the effect of the amendment. Are there any other, are there questions at this time on amendment two? Vice Chair Campbell.
Should amendment number one be adopted? Does that then change how amendment number two would need to read?
If amendment number one gets adopted, and then you do amendment number two, you would have to change at least one, if not both those numbers in amendment number one. But we could, we could do that afterwards.
So we'd have to go back and reconsider amendment number one?
You don't have to reconsider. We will just change. I, well, I'll look towards council on that, but we would have to fix it, or you'd give us permission to fix those numbers.
Adjustments in number one aren't accounted for in number two?
Correct. We, the amendments are written to the ordinance as it sits right now.
Always with the quick math.
I am good at something around here. Thank you.
Any other questions about amendment two? Okay, amendment three.
Thank you. Amendment three is from Councilmember Hitchen. And this goes onto the proposal, 543 S two goes on to page, page seven, and lines 13 through 43, and that deals with the temporary non-congregate micro shelter communities. And what you see there in shading are the changes that are being proposed by the council member.
I want to make sure everyone has time to read this. It prohibits tents from being used for individual sleeping shelters or structures. We've heard some consent, some concern about tents. The rest of these items are a lot of the kinds of provisions we put in the tiny home village land use code to ensure a well-managed community. It seems to me. Councilmember Hitchen, anything to add?
Thank you, Chair. It really is just making it clear what the intent was with the original non-congregate shelter when we placed the, the language in there and trying to make sure that if and when a RFP in a community says yes to this, that they have the, the details of what the intent was behind the funding. Thank you.
Any other questions about amendment number three? Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. And to the maker, I mean, there's still, we're still working through the process from last week's provision for the non-congrat care that passed off this day. This is, sorry, this would still, this would be what would be applied for those who are setting up in individual communities without the passage of last week. And if that's not reversed, then this would still, there'd still be people eligible to apply for this. This isn't money without a place to go. It's funding. Very clear on what our priorities are, aren't very clear how we would disperse it. But there are still opportunities for this to be discussed. Is that true?
Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yes, the intent of the original language was just outside the city of Tacoma, knowing that other communities have land and may have churches or organizations. And so if a city or town in our county wanted to partner with a philanthropic group or somebody who owns land and put up a temporary non-congrat micro shelter, this is what they would have to offer. How they use their land is up to those communities. We don't get to dictate how our different cities and towns use their land. So.
Councilmember Crower?
Thank you, Chair. Do I understand this is saying that it cannot be in the unincorporated, so it would negate the property in span away by the transit center from engaging in a temporary micro shelter emergency setting?
That's not my reading of, of it, Councilmember Crower. It says located outside of the city of Tacoma.
I thought I was reading incorporated. Maybe I'm.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Located in the incorporated areas, but not the city of Tacoma. Located in the incorporated areas.
That's a priority listing, not a.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Sorry, go on. I just read it as that's a priority listing, not a use determination.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all. I would read it as well. Um, the concerns we heard from the executive were around public notice and tents popping up everywhere. Councilmember Kitchen, did that address in this amendment?
Thank you, yes. The sub B, it prohibits tents, so that's really clear. It's individual sleeping shelters or structures, so tiny homes, pallet shelters, other opportunities. But it's not going to be a pop-up tent city. It's, it's something more substantial. And then we also worked on the noticing. Again, this is for the human services contract. So there still could be if, if a city has specific land use processes, whatever they do, just like in the county, we have specific rules around how we notice. That was one of the things that we were trying to address with that underlying bill or the original bill. And so we want to make it really clear to contract with human services and to do this work with the county, here's what's going to happen. And I believe we said 14, let's see. 14 days, 14 days prior to publication, there was another noticing. When you read something multiple times, you get, like, kind of goes into a, um. I think it's.
So, yeah, so the public noticing is embedded in the proposal.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Mr. Bokey, amendment four.
Thank you. Amendment four is on page 10 of the ordinance under the homeless document recording fee. And it's inserting some language in one of the provisos there. Without the approval of the county council, period, the human services department must notify the county council in writing at least 21 days prior to the proposed due date to sign the contract modification amendment or extension. And it has to be done by motion or resolution.
This is modifying, and I might need Ms. Murray or Mr. Taylor to assist here. But this modifies a proviso in the council's underlying budget. So this is not a new thought. This is modifying what we're talking about related to homeless document recording fee fund and all those dollars are, are to get out the door. We had something slightly more restrictive in the underlying bill. This, this, I think, makes it a little bit more, more clear and usable for the department. Ms. Murray, how would you interpret it?
Oh, sorry. So the current budget required that when you have a request for proposal from any, using this fund source, that it be brought before the council for the funding recommendations to be reviewed and approved. When, in this process, you had asked the finance department for the spending plan related to the local document recording fee. And in that process, we learned about $6.5 million of the funding was, has been committed through either contract extensions or modifications. And we're not necessarily sure, like, how that occurred or happened. But it's a substantial amount of funds. And so what this language does is adopt, similar to the way you do the grant applications and authorizations, that if they are going to propose a contract extension or modification, or to supplement the funding with the source, that, that they bring it to the council for your review and approval on the consent agenda, like we do grant applications and approvals, so that you get to see whether it goes out as an RFP, those recommendations, or if they're doing it in, through, through some sort of contract revision or extension.
So this promotes competition in procurement and tries to make it analogous to other procurement of other services?
I think it makes it transparent when they're doing it outside of the procurement process. Because I think the assumption had been, given all we had learned about the county's procurement requirements, that all the funding would be procured by an RFP. And so learning that somewhere, some funds were being used through modifications or extensions, that that be at least daylighted to the public and to yourself to review, no different than if you were to accept grant funding from the federal or state government. It's just, is this the process you want to have happen for the distribution of those funds?
And again, the funds we're talking about are the homeless document recording fee fund. This is the local document recording fee fund. Any questions or comments about this amendment? Councilmember Morrell.
Just curious, Ms. Murray, does the homeless document recording fee fund, does it get audited?
I think all the funds of the county get audited. It just depends on what you want to think of as an audit. Like, there's obviously the annual audit that we do for purposes of the requirements of all government agencies. But then when you look at in terms of, like, performance audits, whether or not we are adhering to our internal processes for the distribution of funds, it's generally a, a thing that the auditor chooses to look at. So it's not automatic, but in terms of, like, a general audit of have we assigned monies to the right accounts, like, that happens on annual basis.
Okay. Other than some of the, I guess, misunderstandings on the modification and the extension that have been given, has any problems been daylighted in that account through the audit process?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know with, I honestly don't know with respect to, like, has this fund been specifically audited? Or the process that we have? Because I think the process that we have had for procurement, it obviously changed over the last year. And so you can see with the report that was given to us by finance, some of those procurements happened in 21, when we did not have, we had a different set of rules. So one of the questions really is, is that, and it, and there may, and it may turn out to be that these contracts are completely allowable to be extended. It's not unreasonable or unexpected that contracts include provisions for extensions. But generally, it's usually for about a four-year period. So one that was that old and actually procured during a time, an emergency situation, it sort of just calls into the question of, like, what was the authority to do that? And I think that the, none of us really knew, I think, that those contracts had been extended until we made that request in the last week. So it's really more about, what are you doing? And honestly, I would just say, just like with the grants and applications, is bringing that information to you, you may say this perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions about amendment four, Vice Chair Campbell?
I don't have one about amendment four. Something came up on amendment three, so at the right time, I'd like to go back to that.
Absolutely. Anything else on amendment four? Okay, let's go back to amendment three, Vice Chair Campbell.
Just, just real quick, because it was brought up around public comment on this. I'm trying to find it in here, but I'm remembering in 540 S, there was a whole section on public comment, what public comment was required. And it was very carefully drafted that everything in 540 S was a minimum of, so it was, must be at least two weeks' notice. Now, the executive or the executive staff could have decided to make it four weeks, five weeks, six weeks. At no point in there was there a limit on how much public outreach staff could do. It was really left pretty wide open with very bare minimums. But there was no maximum cap. Is there any maximum cap in ordinance number, or amendment number three, that caps the amount of public outreach that human services can do on any project?
Amendment three.
No.
Okay. Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. I think we are missing a public comment aspect of this, so I'm gonna go touch base with staff. Because I know I read it, and that's why I was looking at it again and drafted this. It's, it's all good. We had many hands and we've worked on this.
But to Vice Chair Campbell's point, that everything that's in this draft says at least 14 days. I think that's what he's.
Yeah, so let's make sure that we continue to establish minimums. But it was portrayed in the media over the last one that we had somehow installed maximums. And that is the absolute falseness of what we did put in there, which was a minimum of requirement with no cap on how robust of the human services department could do. And so maybe we, apparently, we just need to be a little bit more clear on what they can do. Because I think it's been either accidentally or intentionally misconstrued. And so we need to be more clear in what we're doing because people are looking to misrepresent some of it. So if that means a few more paragraphs, then maybe we need a few more to make sure people understand the duties that they do have.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback, and we'll work on that. Thank you.
Look, I'm hearing, look for some amendments before 3 PM on this one. Thank you for daylighting. Any other questions, feedback on any of these amendments? They're up for consideration at 3 PM today. Thank you for the feedback. Thank you for the staff who's working quickly and hearing the feedback and working with members to further perfect. Okay, we have two more grant applications to review. Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Chair Mello, Paul Bokey, council staff. The first one is Niskwali Road Southwest Asphalt Overlay in the Skwalay River to I-5 northbound ramp. It's the rural arterial, rural arterial program of the County Road Administration Board. It's due next week, and it's, the idea behind this is resurfacing the roadway to prevent further structural damage to the road base. Materials upgrade guardrail terminals to current standards and to improve safety and identifying correct any clear zone safety improvements. It's got high truck use and has provides access to the JBLM gate at Mount Gate Road and connects to I-5 northbound ramp. The request is $1 million, and so that would actually lower the local match to $700,000 if we're able to secure this grant. And I don't know that we have anybody on today on this.
Mr. Ritter's here.
Oh, he is, okay.
He sneaked in as you started presenting. Mr. Ritter, what do you have to add on behalf of the department?
Good afternoon, Chair Mello, council members. Nothing, nothing to add, but happy to answer any questions on this one.
Thank you. Any questions on this grant request? Not seeing any. Let's go to the next one.
The other one is also a project you're familiar with. It is Lackey Road Northwest, Jackson Lake Road Northwest and Key Penn Highway Northwest out on the Key Peninsula. This is a rural arterial program, County Road Administration Board grant. The request is for $2 million. They, and it is for improvements to that intersection. And I'll pass this on to Mr. Ritter.
Mr. Ritter, what do you have to add?
Happy to answer any questions on this one as well.
Thank you. Questions or comments by members? Councilmember Denson?
Yes, Mr. Ritter, thank you so much for, for making sure that this got before us. It's my understanding that we do have the funding for this, this project. However, obviously, if we are to get this grant, it's, it's less county funds that need to be expended. Hopefully, I'm explaining that right. Is that correct?
Yeah, you explained that exactly correct, Councilwoman Denson. So we do, just a little bit of background. We were successful in securing a federal grant through the Puget Sound Regional Council for this project. And so by that action and award, we are committed to the project and have fully funded it subsequently. Here, we're just looking to really leverage additional grant funding. And that will obviously free up local funds for other projects if we're successful.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Community is really, really excited about this project. So thanks to, to Planning Public Works for all of your work moving this forward.
Should help with safety here, slowing down speeds with the introduction of a roundabout and help with traffic flow at the same time. Thank you for pursuing it. Any other questions? I don't see any, Mr. Ritter. Thank you for your attention to detail, making sure we copy these.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. These will appear on our 3 PM meeting consent agenda for consideration. Anything else about the meeting today? I don't see any. Let's go to item number three, external boards and commissions. Mr. Taylor, to begin the discussion as always.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'll be very quick. The Puget Sound Regional Council, as you know, had a recess in August. That recess is coming to an end. So they do have meetings scheduled beginning next week. The first one I want to point out is the Economic Development District Board. Since that board meets on a quarterly basis infrequently, I just want members to be aware that they're having their next quarterly meeting September the 4th, 10 to 12 PM. They haven't released the agenda yet. That will be later this week. Also, the Growth Management Policy Board will have their first meeting after the recess on September the 5th, 10 to 12. And like the Economic Development District, they have also not released the agenda yet. That'll occur later this week. Those are the only two items I have to report on for the Puget Sound Regional Council.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you. Do other members have any updates to boards and commissions they serve on? Councilmember Denson?
Yes, just real quick, I wanted to let folks know that South Sound 911 passed their annual budget. So that was a positive. Lots of details in that. Happy to talk with any of my council member friends about that. And there is some progress being made towards the single system that we talked about last year a bit. Still a lot of work to be done, a lot of decisions to be made to see if it's actually going to happen or not. But thought you might be interested, since we passed that resolution last year, that it was a priority. So there, the, the system owners are still working together on that. And all the fire and police chiefs have been really involved in that process to make sure it's something that will work for our entire community and is a benefit. So thanks.
Thank you for that update. Vice Chair Campbell?
Thank you. It's not really an external boards or commission, just an update from select committee on homelessness. We did receive word back from the city of Lakewood, which will now be sending someone to participate in our conversations. So that now gives us Pierce County, City of Tacoma, Puyallup, and Lakewood all at the table because they've all expressed an urgent need for us to be working together to address homelessness because the problem is becoming so vast that they're, they're seeing they need to be more engaged as we normalize that conversation. We will look at adding additional stakeholders in because we know that we can't solve this alone. Thank you.
Thank you. That is great news. Great that the select committee is working out as envisioned and bringing more communities together to the leadership table. Thank you. Any other external boards and commissions? I don't see any, and I don't have any other chairs topics under section four. Item five is other business. Mr. Dominique? For our communications manager and public information officer update?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I only have one update for you today. In your packet, there is a National Day of Service and Remembrance and a False Prevention Awareness Day proclamation. National Day of Service and Remembrance is for September 11th, 2001, terrorist attacks. National Day of Service and Remembrance is for September eleventh, two thousand and one terrorist attacks. We do a day of service now in response to that as a way to commemorate. And then False Prevention Awareness Day was requested by Pierce County Agent and Disability Resources. That day is actually on September twenty third, but due to scheduling, we're going to do the proclamation on September tenth. And they also have an event they want to give people time to become aware of. And any any questions? That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Dominique? I don't see any. As mentioned, those two proclamations are in the packet, so if you have suggestions, please get with the sponsors or Mr. Dominique. Is there any other business by members? Ms. Long, any other business before we get into an executive session?
No, not today. Thank you.
Well, can you please state the purpose of the executive session?
Yes, thank you. So this is an executive session authorized by R C W forty two thirty one ten one G. The purpose today is to review the performance of a public employee. However, discussion by the council of salaries, wages or other conditions of employment generally applied within the office shall occur in a meeting open to the public. And when the council elects to take final action, hiring, setting salaries of an individual employee or class of employees or discharging or disciplining disciplining an employee, that action shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. And as usual, Mr. Chair, if you would state the time that you'll return to an open meeting, and I'll note just for the public that the only item following this is adjournment.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Um, for members' information, we're going to have to move into the Tohoma Conference Room. Facility staff needs this room for another purpose during this time. So we're going to move into the Tohoma Conference Room for the purposes of an executive session. And we will be back at one thirty for the with the expectation to adjourn at that time. So we'll be in recess till one thirty P M. The time is one thirty one P M. The council is back from its executive session. There being no further business before the Pierce County Council in Tuesday's study session, we are adjourned.